Monday, June seventeenth, six thirty, County Commission meeting to order. Before I forget, I want to wish my wife a happy birthday. She's been twenty-nine for several years now, so. And if she's listening, I'm probably in the doghouse for quite some time. So tonight, we're going to get started with our prayer and our pledge. The prayer will be led by Commissioner Tim Isbell, and our pledge will be led by Sheriff Russell Barker. Before we do that, I would like to take, if we can, a moment of silence. County Law Director Jay Jaeger's mom passed. So if we could, out of respect, just take a brief moment of silence here, then we'll stand and we'll turn it over to you, Commissioner. All right, thank you.
Oh, most gracious and heavenly Father, thank you so much for your Son Jesus Christ and the gift of salvation, Father God. Father God, thank you for the opportunity to stand here with my fellow colleagues, Father God, and for the people that, you know, that we represent that have trust in us, Father God. Just thank you for that opportunity. Father God, thank you for all the prayers that's went to the Law Director, Father God, because I know there's a lot that went up to him. Father God, that's, everything's in, you take care of everything, Father God. Father God, we ask that you just continue to lead this great county, Father God, and in your name I pray, amen.
Amen.
If you would, you want me to pledge a salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. So next, we have appearance of citizens. And what this is, is a time for anyone in the audience to address County Commission on items that could be on the agenda or not on the agenda. If you would like to speak and address the Commission, you've got three minutes to do so. What we ask is that you state your name and your address before you speak. Commissioner Foster will keep a tally of the time. Once you hit thirty seconds, we will remind you, let you know that your time is about to run out. And then it will be a hard cutoff at three minutes. So just wanted to put that out there, we're not trying to be rude or disrespectful, but it will be a hard cutoff. So at this time, I'm going to open up the floor to anyone who would like to address the Commission on any issues. And if you would, you don't have to raise your hand, just come to the podium, state your name and your address. Cole, if you would, I think she, yeah, if you don't mind, we'll get you right after her. State your name and address, please.
Good evening, my name is Donna Maloney. I live at one eleven Tempura Drive in Oak Ridge. And I'm here to speak to you about a selection of a board member to the Library Board. The selection of a representative to the Library Board should be based on several standards. First, the person should have a comprehensive view of the library system and its mission. The Board should not be a place for people with a single-issue interest or a personal agenda. Second, the person should support the overall mission of the library system. Libraries are safe spaces for all people of the community to come and find resources, information, and literature suited to their individual tastes and desires. It serves everyone in the community. Third, the person should use the libraries. People on the Board should be acquainted with the libraries they are serving and thereby be a stakeholder when it comes to making important decisions for the libraries. Finally, the person should be committed to supporting the professional librarians and their staff. The librarians are highly educated, intelligent, capable people, and their work should be respected by those appointed to the Board. I respectfully request that you support the appointment of Terri Ryan to the Library Board, as I believe she exemplifies all of these standards. Terri is an active user and huge supporter of our library system. She runs a book club, frequently uses library services, and emphasizes the role of libraries as safe havens for the community. Her dedication to and understanding of our library system would make her an excellent choice.
All right, thank you. Cole, I'll go ahead and, if you know what to.
Thank you, sir. All right, thank you, Chairman. Good evening, everyone, my name is Colt Jennings. I live on Douglas Lane, and I'm a deputy with Anderson County Sheriff's Office. I'd like to bring to your attention some disturbing numbers concerning the proposed four percent pay increase for county employees. I brought this along, it's the best I can do. Can everyone see this fairly well? Okay, so we have a four percent proposed pay rate. We have a current inflation rate, the CPI that came out last week, of three point three percent. Okay? My insurance, as a county employee, increased twenty-five percent, which, for my salary, is two point seven percent for the year. When you subtract all this, we're at negative two percent. So all county employees will be two percent poorer for this next fiscal year if you pass this budget. So with that being said, I respectfully request that you postpone the vote on the budget tonight and have further deliberations. Any questions? Thank you all for your time.
Okey-dokey, is there, okay. Janine, I'll go to you next.
My name is Justin Eisenhower, I live at two fifteen Early Drive in Powell. Good evening. My neighbors and I, over the last year, have observed constant animal cruelty taking place in my neighbor's yard directly behind my house. Through repeated attempts to resolve this matter in cooperation with the Anderson County Animal Care and Control, I've learned that the county and state ordinances regarding this situation are lacking. Therefore, I'm recommending review and revision of this county's animal control ordinances so as to enable more effective enforcement and more comprehensive prevention of cruelty to animals. I ask that this Board considers adopting similar or better animal control ordinances such as those which currently govern Knox County. These ordinances are publicly available on the Internet, I do have a URL, but it's easily found. That's all. Any questions?
Any questions?
Yes, what are you observing?
I do have pictures that would.
Tell me what you're observing.
I am observing a medium-sized male black dog being left out in the yard. Yard is a generous word, it's a patch of dirt controlled by a twenty-foot chain. It's left out there from sometime in the morning till, most frequently, eight-thirty, nine-thirty, as late as midnight. And nothing's done to, other than the bare minimum. It's given water, I assume, most of the day, but I can't see that far. Its conditions don't change, whether it's rain, snow, cold, or this week's heat. He's out there right now.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay, Janine?
I'm Janine Brewer, I live at nine fifty-six Sinking Springs Road. Anderson County's been my home for sixty-three years. When I was leaving my house, my husband said, quote, "You know it's hard for you to be subtle," so bear that in mind. Six years ago, oh, and I'm also the outgoing person on the Library Board that you are considering replacing. So six years ago, when I was on the Library Board, I was asked to be there by a regional library member. And at the time, as members' appointments ran out, it was very hard to find a person for the Library Board. You really had to beat the bushes. But now we have a situation where we have like eight or ten people applying. So in your process to decide, that might be one question you ask people, why now? Why are you coming to the Board now? Some other things you want to consider when choosing a Board member, you want to find someone who will definitely support the goals and missions of our libraries. Our library's research proves over and over that a very strong public library kind of fuels a community's economy. It improves property values, it draws businesses to its, to the community, and it's very important. You need to pick someone who is willing to listen and consider different opinions than some of their own, and someone who is a problem solver, and someone who's interested in solutions. Someone who is articulate and unbiased. And I know it's very hard to see these things when you just read a piece of paper or hear someone for three minutes, but those are very important qualities for the Board. And also, if you look at the skill set of the Board members, you know, do we have someone with technical skills, with financial skills, with organizational management skills, with literary and even writing skills? When you're always a good writer on the Board. While I have been on the Board, good heavens, I made a list of words that came to my mind. I've been inspired, humored, exasperated, grateful, frustrated, floored, disappointed, and absolutely just over, exasperated. But, but more than anything, I have developed a very deep appreciation for everyone that serves on the Board, because, good heavens, these are voluntary positions, and especially, you know, that includes County Commission and our city councils. And I'm very grateful for the opportunity to serve, I've learned so much. And the only thing I can say, it may seem like a very small responsibility. Thanks, but it's, it isn't, it reminds me of a scripture that says, "Out of small things precedeth that which is great." And so who you choose to be on the Library Board will matter. Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm Todd Waterman, four eighteen Orchard Knob Road in Clinton. I think it's very, very important to protect our kids. And the best way to do that, it seems, it seems, seems like, seems pretty natural to think that if kids don't know anything about sex, that then they won't have sex and they'll be okay. Unfortunately, the data says that the opposite is true. The better a sex education that kids get, and the better access they have to birth control, the fewer unintended pregnancies we're going to see, the fewer teen pregnancies, the fewer teens we're going to see basically ruining their lives because they didn't know any better. Because their boyfriend taught them about sex, or their, or some other friend. That's just a tragedy that I would hate to see. And it's going to happen if our kids don't get a good sex education, even if the library is the only place they can get it. In fact, especially if the library is the only place they can get it. So please, don't appoint an ideologue who's going to make this, make everything worse here, who's going to cause a lot of harm to our kids, even if they believe that they're protecting the kids in the process. So thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Okey-dokey. I didn't see anybody else, so I'm going to go ahead and move on. All right, so we will move on to the approval and correction of agendas. We will start out with the consent agenda. Is there any? We have a motion by Commissioner Wondell and seconded by Commissioner Beauchamp. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, the regular agenda. We have a motion by Commissioner Foster, seconded by Commissioner Allen. Commissioner Vow, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'll add under new business, if I may.
Okay.
Funding for upcoming trial.
Funding for upcoming?
Jury trial, I guess.
Okay. Commissioner Foster, Commissioner Allen, any? Are there any other, is that all you have, Commissioner Vow?
Yes, sir, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Any other additions or corrections to the agenda? Seeing none, all in favor of the corrected agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We will add that under new business. Okey-dokey. Moving on to the resolution presentation for Ms. Cherie Phillips. Mayor Frank.
Cherie, come on up here. So I did ask the patron saint of the Senior Center, Commissioner McCamey, if he wanted to read this, and I know he's had some lung issues, so he was worried about getting through the whole thing. But he said, "Mayor, you go ahead," but we want to thank Robert for being a big part of this as well in the founding of the Senior Center. So, a resolution recognizing Cherie Phillips for her years of service to the senior citizens of Anderson County. Whereas Cherie Turner was born in Clinton, Tennessee, on May sixteenth, do you care if I share your date? You're not like Ms. Mays, who's forever twenty-nine. Nineteen sixty-two, the daughter of Tom and Aileen Turner. And whereas, along with her two brothers, Timmy and Jimmy, Cherie grew up in Clinton and attended Schindler Elementary, South Clinton Elementary, Clinton Junior High, and Anderson County High Schools. And whereas, in nineteen seventy-seven, at the age of fifteen, Cherie Turner married her husband Buster Phillips. They have been married for forty-seven years and have two children, a daughter, April, and a son, Thomas, and four grandchildren, Mallory, Chris, Alex, and Riley. And whereas, in nineteen ninety-eight, Cherie Turner Phillips started working for the East Tennessee Human Resource Agency, where she started out delivering meals to homebound seniors. Then she became a home assessor for meals, determining who qualified for the service. Cherie then moved to the Office on Aging, becoming the assistant to the director, then to, then the director of the local Office on Aging. In all, Cherie Turner Phillips worked a total of fifteen and a half years with Ethera. And whereas, Cherie then became the very first director for the first-ever Anderson County Senior Center when the facility first opened in January of twenty sixteen in rented space off of Edgewood Lane in Clinton. The center was officially moved to ninety-six Mariner Point Drive in the summer of twenty twenty, where it has continued to grow under Cherie's direction. Now, therefore, be it resolved, meeting in regular session on Monday, June seventeenth, twenty twenty-four, that we, the Anderson County Board of Commissioners and County Mayor Terri Frank, do hereby proclaim Friday, June twenty-first, twenty twenty-four, as Cherie Turner Phillips Day in Anderson County. And we recognize Cherie for her historical role in helping start Anderson County's first-ever Senior Center, for her incredible passion for older adults, and for her abundant energy in meeting the needs of seniors. We wholeheartedly thank her for her years of commitment, hard work, and service to the seniors of Anderson County during her years at Ethera and our own Anderson County Government. Cherie will be missed greatly, and we wish her much happiness in her retirement.
I don't know if I can talk or not, but I never thought I would get to this day, and you just don't think about it. And there's so many people that's involved, and Robert, you know, if it wasn't for you that came to my council meeting, this would have never been, I wouldn't be here. So I appreciate you, I hope you know that. And I appreciate all of you because you've stood behind me. I know there's been some rough patches, I know there's days you probably wanted to choke me. But we overcame it, and we built something that I hope you'll always be proud of. It's a hard decision. I feel like, I tell the mayor, I feel like I'm giving my life up, because it's been my life for so long. They always came first, but I think I'm tired. Lot of work, lot of work. So I think it's time for me to rest and let somebody else pick it up. I love each and every one of you, and I'm available anytime that y'all need me to help do anything. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, so Commissioner Wondell has a motion, is that to approve the resolution, sir? And seconded by Commissioner Isbell. At this time, I will open the floor up to anybody that would like to say a word to Cherie. Commissioner Isbell?
Yes, Cherie, would it be possible to get the meatloaf recipe? Thank you.
All right, Commissioner McCamey, sir?
Well, eight years ago, Cherie walked in the commission meeting, and I recognized her, and I thought, "What's she doing here?" And she was asking about the county taking over the Ethera contract. And I said, "Why?" You know, "If it's running good, why?" You know? She said, "I just feel like it would be better if we could have a senior center instead of just an office on aging, if we had those funds." And I said, "Where, where are you, what, what do you do?" And she said, "We take care of seniors." I said, "Where's your office?" She told me, "Across the street here, go up those little narrow metal steps to the second floor, and that's where the seniors had to go to," and I went over there the next day after County Commission meeting. I said, "This is terrible, you know? We do need a better place, and we do need a senior center, we need, you know, one that they can access." And came back to County Commission, and it took us two or three months, I guess, to really get the funding and all to do it, though. We started it, and I, I think it's one of the best things that's ever happened. I kept saying, "Our seniors need this, our seniors need that." And then one day, it dawned on me, I said, "Hey, I'm a senior, we need, we need this," you know? I was acting like a spring chicken out there, you know, just taking care of these old people, but then I realized I was one of them. But I, I appreciate Cherie, and I appreciate her making the trip over here and asking about the senior center, because the whole commission wasn't even aware that we didn't have something for seniors, you know? And when it become evident that we needed something, the commission got on board. And if you drive into Mariner Point, first building on the left is, is a testament to senior center, so.
Yep.
Thank you, Cherie.
All right, Commissioner Wondell, you're recognized, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Cherie, I just want to say thank you. All the years I've known you, you've been a leader, your passion for the seniors is unmatched. You're genuine. You would never come to me directly and let it be known if you need something. You followed the protocol, I guess you could say, but I always appreciated that about you. You didn't want to cause no trouble, you just wanted to take care of seniors, and that's where your heart stood, and I just want to say thank you. And yes, rest, enjoy yourself, and maybe you go down there and take in the festivities for a change on the other side, so thank you.
Okey-dokey. Yes, Sheriff Barker?
I'm a little concerned about her leaving, I'm afraid the calls for service on her street are going to go up. Some of you may or may not know, but her father and my mother are brother and sister. And I have witnessed firsthand the, the outpouring and the dedication she's given to her seniors, and it is absolutely amazing. One of the, one of the toughest things that, that, for, for, I say me, but it's really Director Greg McBroom, she's had him do everything from jumping out of cakes to dancing. And, and she just has a way about her, we can't say no. And we're truly, truly going to miss that at the sheriff's office. And I have known her my whole life, and, and she can be a tad bossy. And it was just amazing, her whipping up a phone call and us scurrying down as many deputies as we needed to to make whatever she needed happen. But she is absolutely phenomenal.
Even if it was peeling potatoes.
Peeling potatoes, yeah. Yeah, some of them, some of them lost their badge and became trustees all of a sudden. But we're incredibly grateful for her, I'm incredibly proud of you, and I wish you nothing but the best, and I'll holler at you if you need anything.
Thanks, Sheriff.
I would like to say something, I would like for y'all to know the impact that Cherie has had on the seniors in a serious way. I'm Kim Carroll, and I started going about six months ago. It absolutely saved my life. I was alone, I was lonely, I have PTSD, I have stress disorder, and I had nowhere to go, no one to talk to, no one to socialize with. And I showed up one day because my therapist suggested it. She absolutely welcomed me, everyone did. It took me a little time to be able to be comfortable. But now I go, I paint three to five days a week, I do some other things, I volunteer there now. Whereas before, I didn't even like to go out in public. And being ADHD and dyslexic, I have a little trouble filling out forms and stuff. It's nothing for me to come in with the envelope and say, "Cherie, please check this, make sure I didn't miss anything, make sure I did it right." And inevitably, I missed a couple of questions or didn't get it. When I needed help doing some serious government forms, I took them in there, I had a stack of papers, she went through every one of them. Normally, my daughter-in-law would do that, but my son's stationed in Maryland now, so I didn't have anybody. She didn't say no, she didn't say wait, she didn't say, "Can we do it tomorrow? Give me a few minutes, if she's busy with something." That's it. I didn't have that a year ago, I didn't even have that six months ago. I was beside myself, I didn't know what to do, I was so lonely and so afraid of being out in public. So I just want you to know that she has a serious impact on a lot of the seniors in a lot of different ways.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. So we have a motion and a second for the resolution approval. Any other discussion from Commissioners? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okey-dokey. All right. Go to the elections, the nominating committee report. So I, just please bear with me for just a second here on this one. The nominating committee meeting was on June tenth at five o'clock to appoint the vacancy, the upcoming vacancy for the Library Board that Ms. Brewer, she'll be, her term will be expiring at the end of the month. There was a nomination for chairman and vice chairman, those were approved. The, the nominations made by the Board to be interviewed were Ms. Darla Williams, Terri Ryan, and Adriana Olson. The first round of ballot, no one met the majority, Ms. Olson was a. Ms. Olson was then the lowest vote, moved off. And then we had several votes thereafter where a majority was not met. There was a motion made by Commissioner Wells, seconded by Commissioner Isbell, that if we didn't, a decision was not made, that we would forward it to full commission. That is where we are at today. The, Ms. Williams had the majority, didn't have the majority, but had two more votes than Ms. Ryan. And then it's my understanding that the library board met on Thursday of last week? Is that correct?
Uh, yes, but we, we did not take up the issue or make a recommendation since it was forwarded to commission.
All right. So what we, at this point, I will open the floor to any commissioner. Again, for nominating committee, it came down to Darla Williams and Terry Ryan. Commissioner McCamey?
Um, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a nominate both of the candidates, Ms. Williams and Terry Ryan.
Okay.
And then ask them if they're here to speak to us and then we can make our decision.
Absolutely. All right, we have that. Is there any other nominations from the floor? All right, is there a, a motion to cease nominations?
I'd like to motion nomination ceased, Mr. Chairman.
All righty, we have a motion and seconded by Commissioner Yeager. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. So what we'll do, if it's okay with the commission, we'll just go in the order that we went in at nominating. So Ms. Williams, we'll allow you to kind of go over your background again and then if commission has any questions, we'll...
Okay.
Yeah, we'll give, we'll put three minutes on the clock and Commissioner Foster will let you know.
Give you thirty seconds, Warren.
Okay.
You don't have to talk three minutes.
No, you don't, if you don't want to.
I probably will. My name's Darla Williams and I, first thing I want to say is both the ladies that spoke, I agree with everything they said. And I feel like I meet all those criteria that they laid out. I am a retired educator. I worked in Anderson County, I worked in Knox County, taught English Language Arts in Anderson County and World History in Knox County. I also served for three and a half years as a school librarian. So I do have a good knowledge of literacy. My passion is reading. I've used the library since I was four or five years old, had a library card since then. Always used the library, I used mostly online because I was teaching. It was hard for me to get to the library before the library closed. But I've always been in a library somewhere. My husband kids and me, every time we go on vacation, I always go visit the library, always check them out. I do have a, quite a variety of background. I have financial experience, I've been a children's and youth ministry director. I've done budgets in nursing, I've done budgets in church, I've done budgets at school. So a $600,000 budget doesn't scare me. I'm very responsible, I've done booster club money. A little bit, a bit of oversharing, they told me, with what the money was spent for, but I feel like that's important. So I, I don't, I don't feel any kind of qualms about that whatsoever. I do feel like I'm qualified. I have a lot of leadership ability. I've, I've worked with some people sitting in this room who can testify to that. But I, I look forward to working with the board. I don't have any agenda. I love the library and as far, and I'll just address the elephant in the room, I guess you could say. As far as all the hoopla with the, with the library, I wasn't involved in any of that. I didn't attend the meetings, my mother was sick, my father and I were taking care of her, didn't have the time to do that. So it was kind of out of the loop a little bit, I guess you could say. But when I started doing some research, it, it broke my heart. That because I love the library and it concerned me. And I started checking out the TSLA, you know, on the state mission and all the things that go with working a library board. And I saw some things that I could be an asset with that maybe are not being done, you know? That's something for me to figure out. You know, I want to get in there and start working. But I've worked with all kinds of people. I taught middle school, I'll leave that there. So I've, I've, I've learned how to handle a lot of problems. But I, I look forward to working with everyone and I have nothing but wanting the library to be a source of service to our community and do good for our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, are there any questions for Ms. Williams from the commission? All right, seeing none, thank you. Ms. Ryan, are you here? I just, there you are. You're being hid back there. Again, you'll have three minutes, Commissioner Foster will warn you at thirty seconds if there...
Thank you. My name's Terry Ryan. I am new to this process. I saw the ad in the Courier News that said they were looking for a library board member at large in the county and I thought, wow, that's an interesting thing, I would like to do that. I've been looking for a way to give back to the county. I've been here a long time as well and thought I wanted to volunteer in some fashion to give back to the county. And I do participate in a book club and I believe that libraries are a source of lifelong learning. Everybody goes to the library from the time you're little and all the way through adults. And my children are grown now and I have more time to serve. And I am fascinated by the Rocky Top Library Garden thing, how they're bringing the learning where you're actually doing things and that makes you interested in checking out a book to learn even more about the topic. So I really found that very fascinating, that they brought that to the Rocky Top Library. I have lots of experience in a lot of things as well. And I substitute taught in between jobs when my one job went away. I didn't want to sit home, so I did substitute teach for many years, so I have experience doing that. I mentor college kids and high school teachers in my job right now. I sent you all the commissioners my resume. And if you have any questions for me, I'm very interested in serving the county. I don't have an agenda either, I was not involved in any of that stuff. I don't have social media, I don't follow it. What I know about it, I read in the newspaper and so...
All right.
Does anybody have any questions?
All right, is there any questions for Ms. Ryan? Excuse me. Okeydoke, seeing none?
Where do you live?
I live at 111 Mike Miller Lane. I'm in the county, I'm not a city, any of the city residents. I, I live in the county.
Mike Miller?
Yes.
Mike Miller, all right. Okeydoke. Are there any questions before we move to, to making our selection?
Mr. Chairman, Ms. Williams, where do you live?
I live in the city, but I can't answer this.
I didn't ask you that, tell me where you live.
That's okay. I live in Woodland Drive at Clinton.
Woodland? Okay, thank you.
Woodland Drive. Commissioner Wells?
I'm gonna, if this is inappropriate to ask, you stop me, I'm also going to give the commissioner an out if he doesn't want to show any, any favor one way or the other. But Commissioner Anderson being our sole member on the library board, if he's comfortable, I'd kind of like to get your opinion on where you stand. And again, if you want to step back and not answer, I respect that as well.
Well, thank you. Commissioner Wells, I consistently voted for Ms. Ryan at the nominating meeting. I do think since there's been some discussion about the composition of the board and if the county has enough representation and stuff, that, that if, if I were to make a distinction, since we're replacing a county at-large member, we should stick with the county. And having said that, I think they're both eminently qualified, I don't doubt that at all. But that was the position I had at the board meeting and I... I, I did not, we did not take it up at the library board level since it's really commission's final say-so to confirm whether the board recommends or whether nominating recommends. So I didn't want to, we didn't think we'd create an awkward situation if we went one way and commission went the other since we're, we're going to work with whoever commission appoints, so. Thank you.
All right, Commissioner McCamey?
That was, one of the things that concerned me is Clinton, the city of Clinton appoints two members to the board. The city of Rocky Top appoints two and the city of Norris appoints, is that right? And then there's two that generally come from the rural section of the county. This would give Clinton, with Ms. Williams, it'd give her, it'll give the city of Clinton three members on the board and be a little top-heavy because we don't have one at-large member that's from the rural part of the county. Commissioner, Commissioner Anderson is on the board and he's in the rural part of the county, but he is the commission representative, not the county representative, not the at-large county representative. It's generally been two, two, two and two and then one commissioner. And that, that does concern me that Clinton would have three, you know, be a little top-heavy in my opinion.
Gotcha. Commissioner Palmer?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If that is the direction that we want to go, that should be written down or in our rules or somewhere, mentioned somewhere. And it wasn't. A public notice was given to the entire county. And as it's been stated, all, all of the Clinton residents, Oak Ridge residents pay county taxes. So I don't see this as representing Clinton, but this person would be representing the entire county. And I would hate for us to sacrifice the most qualified, the one with the most qualifications because they live in a city limits, especially since this is not written anywhere, it's not a rule, it's not, it's not anywhere noted. So wasn't given in the public notice as well. So I just, I would hate for us to not choose the most qualified person for the position.
Gotcha. All right.
Mr. Chairman, I, I didn't mean to insinuate that it was written down or anything.
No.
Just a concern that I had.
Yes, sir. Any other commissioners? Commissioner Allen?
Yeah, I also agree with Commissioner Palmer. Also, Ms. Williams coming out of the nominating committee, she had the most votes. She had, what, two-thirds more votes than the, than the other lady did. So we should consider that also.
Thank you. Annette? Well, I'm going to go to Commissioner Isbell, but we'll go ahead and get this party started here. Commissioner Isbell, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In nominating committee, I was the one that nominated Ms. Williams and it's based because of the impressive resume that she had. And I actually called and spoke to several, three as a matter of fact, from different areas that she worked in. And all three gave her all stellar recommendations. And that was without them talking to each other. I mean, it's just three completely independent, so that's why I went in that direction. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Val, I'll give you the last word, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't ever get the last word, especially at home, but I appreciate that.
This is a carryover, Father, thank you.
To Commissioner McCamey's point, he may not be aware of this, but in a few of the nominating committee meetings I've attended in the past, that very issue was brought up, that it is a county-wide library system. We got into the discussion of it, it's a city library in Oak Ridge, but Oak Ridge residents can come to the Rocky Top Library if they so choose. We spoke about its, the library in Norris, but people from Rocky Top can go to the Norris Library if they choose. And I believe, and somebody correct me if I'm wrong, it was determined that it was going to be extremely difficult to say the county representatives only resided in the county. Technically, the only library that's in outside of city limit is ours up in Bresel. So I, I get where Commissioner McCamey's coming from, but I don't know if that's a, a relevant point as, as we discuss this issue here today. I believe it's been discussed before and majority of us have decided it, it's not an issue. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. All right, so if you haven't done so already, just make sure your name is on the top or the top line and who you are supporting on the second line. And I know Commissioner Foster, oh, my bad. And then the clerk will call the roll in the vote. And just so everybody knows, it will take nine votes to secure this appointment. All right, Ms. Ryan, you have been appointed to the Anderson County Library Board.
Mr. Chairman, would, would it be appropriate if...
Yeah, I was...
Call it into the microphone, just to have it on...
Yeah. If you could read out the results loudly. Commissioner Mays, Williams, Commissioner Palmer, Williams, Commissioner McCamey was Ryan, Commissioner Isabel was Williams, Commissioner Anderson was Ryan, Commissioner Allen was Williams, Commissioner Aaron was Ryan, Commissioner Yeager, Ryan, Commissioner Vandergriff, Ryan, Commissioner Val, Williams, Commissioner Smallridge, Ryan, Commissioner Waddell, Ryan, Commissioner Bochamps, Ryan, Commissioner White, Ryan, Michael Foster, Commissioner Williams and Aaron Wells, Commissioner Ryan. Ten for Ryan and six for Williams. Thank you, sir. All right, Ms. Ryan, congratulations. You're, you will now represent the county on the library board. Thank you. All right. Moving on to County Mayor Terry Frank.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and county commissioners. The first item on the agenda, I want to express that I appreciate the partnership with the Board of Commissioners as together we set aside this special time in our meeting to give public recognition to our Anderson County employees for their years of service. Our HR team of Kim Jeffers Whitaker, Drew Stone and Holly Fields, they do an excellent job of tracking the years of service for our employees and they take time to work with supervisors and elected officials to recognize each employee with a certificate. And if you're on social media at all, you will see our HR team posting wonderful pictures each time an employee meets a tenure milestone. In addition to the work of HR, we take this time at this public meeting to acknowledge these years of service. If you think about it, our Anderson County employees spend most of their waking hours at work. This investment of time and effort and loyalty is to be commended and officially recognized. We want our employees to know their service is valued and that each person is important and appreciated in the work of public service that is our Anderson County Government. So tonight, we honor the following individuals and we say thank you. We see your work, we recognize your service and we honor your loyalty to Team Anderson County Government. So with five years of service, we have Robert Jones with the Sheriff's Department, Marty Blackwell with the Sheriff's Department, Brian Galloway with the Sheriff's Department, Stephen Lewis with the Sheriff's Department, Greg McBroom with the Sheriff's Department, Brittany Seiler, Sheriff's Department, Kevin Tarbill... Brittany Seiler, Sheriff's Department, Kevin Tarbill, Sheriff's Department, Christian Young, Sheriff's Department, Molly Williams with ACTV, Brandy Goins with the Library, Mara Vesby with Circuit Court, Carrie Collins, County Clerk, Kayla Webb with the County Clerk, Shawna Harness in Elections, Chance Hauck, EMA, Ashley Yost with EMS, Elijah Dixon, EMS, Janelle Fontaine, EMS, James Hurst, EMS, Casey Perkins, Health Department, Sally Darnell, Highway, Andrew Stone, HR, Sandra Slater, Juvenile Court, Sierra Dyson, Fleet Services, Roy Branham, Fleet Services, Carl Roach, Property Assessor, that's Jean, Marjorie Tinker, Planning and Development, and Tammy Cagle, Trustees Office. With ten years of service, we have Daphne Wyndham with the Libraries, Mariah Webb with the Libraries, Melanie Morgan with the Sheriff's Department, Floyd Long Jr., Sheriff's Department, Lincoln Steele, Sheriff's Department, Karen Faust, Sheriff's Department, Ronald Williams, Sheriff's Department, Nancy Schultz, Circuit Court, Tammy Hazel, Clerk and Master, Matthew Wilson, EMS, Michael Parton, Highway, Todd Lamb, Highway, and William Sprouse, Highway. With fifteen years of service to Anderson County Government and the public, Charles Brayden, Sheriff's Department, Kimberly Bunch, County Clerk, William Cornet, Sheriff's Department, Don Schoolia, Sheriff's Department, Rick Cooley, Sheriff's Department, Andy Garrett, ACTV, Mark Dyson, Senior, EMS. With twenty years of service to Anderson County, Sheila Roach, Health Department, and Wendy Garrison, the Sheriff's Department. With twenty-five years of service, John Vickery, Fleet Services. And with thirty years of service in Anderson County Government, Kelly Hazelhurst, County Clerk, and Todd Holbrook, Property Assessor. And tonight, we recognize all these folks for their hard work, their loyalty, and we appreciate them. I'll, I'll talk to HR about that. The next item, I'm requesting a motion for confirmation of appointment of Jonathan Tuie to fill the vacancy left by Justin Kramer on Plaining Commission. This will be a term expiring January of 2027.
All right, we got a motion and a second for approval. Any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
All right, and then the next is a, I'm requesting a motion to confirm, confirm Mr. Zach Foster's designation as a certified archivist, and I have his certificate here. Took him three years to get this, it's a three-year program, and appoint him as an ex-officio member of the Anderson County's Public Records Commission.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Jaeger for approval, seconded by Commissioner Bochamp. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
The next, I'm requesting a motion to extend our Energy Communities Alliance Grant ninety days to September thirtieth, 2024.
Okay, we have a motion and a second by Commissioner Foster, Commissioner Anderson. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And the next item, I just want to, I, I should've mentioned this with Sharice's presentation, but everyone is invited to her retirement party, which will be this Friday, June 21st, her day in Anderson County Govern, in Anderson County, Tennessee, and that will be at 1:00 PM. So you can come dressed in your 60s attire, or you can just come as you are. Thank you.
Commissioner Isbell, you're recognized, sir.
Yes, sir.
We only had one action item coming out of Operations Committee, and it was a, Commissioner McCamey made a motion, and the mayor gave an update at full commission, seconded by Commissioner Jaeger, on the cable internet office building for Highland and Comcast. Do you know anything, or?
Yeah, yes, so, so I, I knew the building had been built, but I reached out to Highland and the general manager and CEO, Mark Patterson. The Anderson County portion of the Tennessee Emergency Broadband Fund, the American Rescue Plan Grant, is in its final stages for Highland. Construction of the strand and fiber has been completed. He indicated that they expect the fiber testing results from the contractor next week, and so I reached out over a week ago on that. From there, we expect roughly three to four weeks to fire up and test the access equipment in the remote before turning up any customers. Currently, service drops are being staked to build to every rooftop that has completed an application with Highland Communications in the grant areas of Anderson County. This is to expedite connecting the subscribers to the broadband network in late June or early July. The building that is there is, they, it is called a remote central office. So it is a facility that someone can go into, but it is operated remotely, and then they just go in to check the equipment. And I have a picture, if anyone wants me to distribute that, or I can give it to the media as well. For Comcast, I, I know the last time I gave a report, they had indicated they would be a bit further along, but the update from them is that they have completed the walkout, they have completed design, and they are currently on track to complete the project in 2025. So I think we originally had thought at the end of 2024, but I guess they've pushed that forward some.
Okay.
Go ahead, sir.
And while, while you're up there, I just want to say, on behalf of Commissioner Val and myself, thank you very much for helping to reach out to AT&amp;T. And as we've took this up so many times, they've been without phone service up on the mountain for a couple of weeks now. And we have elderly people that live up there, and that's their only source of communication. So I appreciate, you know, Commissioner Val and myself both appreciate what you're doing.
Absolutely, thank you.
Okeydoke. Robbie? Thank you, Mayor. Yes, sir.
We have a short recess before we get into the budget. We won't be here long, man.
Yes, sir. We are gonna take, sorry, Robbie. You wanna take a ten-minute, is that good for you? All right. All right, we are taking a ten, yeah, take a ten-minute recess.[1077.65]
All right, hold on one second Robbie.
You're good. Give me seat anybody's out.
Robert. Steve Baron. You can tell the Marlboro men. All right. They'll be here in just a second I would imagine. All right Robbie. Go ahead sir.
Sure. Cash and fund balance report ending May of twenty-four, twenty-two forty, sorry. General fund restricted funds of one point four million, committed funds are at one point two million. Assigned funds four point one million. An assigned fund balance is at ten million sixty-five thousand six eighty for a total fund balance of sixteen million eight oh five seven eighty-five. Cash ending May twenty-two million one thirty-nine oh one. Schools eight point five million in fund balance and twelve point two million in cash. Of course each fund is listed on here with their cash and fund balance. Any questions on this report?
All right seeing none, go ahead Robbie.
Okay, the sales tax report for April. The county as a whole four point four million increased three point six percent. Anderson County's portion down five hundred and eight thousand three forty-two compared to five forty-two last month. But projected for the fiscal year with two more months left, we should hit six million which would be more than last year's total in what we have budgeted for this fiscal year.
You do, go ahead.
All right, the ARP projects report. Thirty-three and thirty-four probably were added from last month, I'm pretty sure we approved those last month, the parks Bobcat and the Anderson County Fire Commission funding for the volunteer fire departments and cities as well. And I wrote a little note under obligated, the funds have to be obligated by December thirty-first twenty-two four either with a PO or a contract and spent by December thirty-first twenty-two-six. We still have one point four million available to spend. All right. And last is the grant inventory for the county. We added three new grants too from EMA and the ORCA grant from the mayor's office.
All right.
Any questions about either one of those reports?
All right. Moving on to the amendments.
Okay, group two appropriations from the school department, there are three of those sixteen seventeen and eighteen seeking approval as a group. I can answer any questions as well as Dr. Barrett is here.
No motion? All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Vandergriff. There's, we've muted, we've muted your machine Commissioner Foster. Is, we have no ability to. All right Commissioner Isbell. All right, any discussion on this motion? All right seeing none, go to the board and vote please. Sixteen yes, zero no, motion passes.
Thank you, group two transfers from the school department, there are eight of those nineteen through twenty-six.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve as a group. And just so you know in the back, part of this is because we don't have the, some don't have the ability to even make a motion on their board. So we have a motion by Commissioner Allen and second by Commissioner Wells. Please go to the board and vote. All right, so while we're doing this, Annette will you please call the roll?
Okay Chairman Mays.
Yes.
Commissioner Palmer.
Yes.
Commissioner McCamey.
Yes.
Commissioner Isbell.
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson.
Yes.
Commissioner Allen.
Yes.
Commissioner Varren. Commissioner Jaeger.
Yes.
Commissioner Vandergriff.
Yes.
Commissioner Vowell.
Yes.
Commissioner Smallridge.
Yes.
Commissioner Wondell.
Yes.
Commissioner Beauchamp.
Yes.
Commissioner White.
Yes.
Commissioner Foster.
Yes.
Commissioner Wells.
Yes.
All right, motion passes.
All right, thank you, group four appropriations non-school, there are seventeen of those, twenty-seven through thirty-seven, forty, forty-one, forty-eight, forty-nine, fifty-three and fifty-four.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Jaeger to approve as a group.
Second.
Uh, we have a second by Commissioner McCamey. Any discussion on the motion? Roll call please. Annette you might want to keep that mic close.
Commissioner Mays.
Yes.
Chairman Mays. Commissioner Palmer.
Yes.
McCamey.
Yes.
Isbell.
I've got a question.
Yes sir.
On seventeen, group four seventeen, the twenty-two thousand to tourism, that was just moving it, there wasn't putting it in the chamber, that was just moving it in.
That's my understanding sir, yes sir.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Varren.
Yes.
Jaeger.
Yes.
Vandergriff.
Yes.
Vowell.
Yes.
Smallridge.
Yes.
Wondell.
No.
But Beauchamp.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
Wells.
Yes.
I'd like to clarify something. That motion number, the one that Commissioner Isbell asked about for the tourism did not pass in budget committee. It failed for by vote, so.
That was not even included in the vote.
Thirty-one should not be included at all. Well it does say motion failed on here, so.
So we're approving that the motion failed? In theory.
I appreciate that.
All right, uh, go ahead Robbie, motion passed by the way.
Thank you.
So what does that mean?
Well that just, that budget.
Failed in budget and we passed it here?
No, we did not.
No, we just, we, we passed it as submitted. No, you're good.
It was written in the minutes as, the motion failed.
Yeah. Okey-dokey, go ahead Robbie.
Okay, group six transfers non-school, there are ten of those, twelve, thirty-eight, thirty-nine, forty-two, forty-three, forty-four, forty-five, forty-six, forty-seven and fifty.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Foster. Second by Commissioner White. Is the board ready to vote? All right, let's go to the board and vote. All right Annette, roll call please.
Chairman Mays.
Yes.
Palmer.
Yes.
McCamey.
Yes.
Isbell.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Varren.
Yes.
Jaeger.
Yes.
Vandergriff.
Yes.
Vowell.
Yes.
Smallridge.
Yes.
Wondell.
So.
Beauchamp.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
Wells.
Yes.
All right, motion passes.
Like Little House on the Prairie all of a sudden or something with the technology. All right, we're into group seven miscellaneous. Section A was a grant application from the Clinton Library for seven thousand dollars, thirty-five hun, it was thirty-five hundred match and a thirty-five hundred dollar grant.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Beauchamp for approval. We have a second, we have a second by Vice Chairman, Chairwoman Vandergriff. Any discussion on the motion? All right seeing none, Ms. Pruitt if you'll call the roll.
Mays.
Yes.
Palmer.
Yes.
McCamey.
Yes.
Isbell.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Varren.
Yes.
Jaeger.
Yes.
Vandergriff.
Yes.
Vowell.
Yes.
Smallridge.
Yes.
Wondell.
Yes.
Beauchamp.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
Wells.
All right, motion passes.
Thank you, intersection B it was a fleet vehicle report by John Vickery and the mayor. There was two motions from this, both budget amendments that we have approved already fifty-three and fifty-four to purchase some vehicles through ARP funds and a solid waste vehicle through their fund balance. So I don't, I've, that's already been approved by us, so we're good on that. Okay, section C, the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five budgets. The budget committee, we, I've sent y'all an email earlier this year with, earlier this year, earlier this week, the last week with the full budget details. All budgeted revenues were a hundred forty-nine million seven seventy-two, four ninety-two, budgeted expenditures a hundred and fifty-two million eight sixty-three, four oh six. Um, that's about a three million dollar deficit, a lot of these budgets do have deficits but we have lost a lot of money with our property tax this year due to the ratio dropping to fifty percent, fifty-seven I think. So, and it should pick back up next year which is also a reappraisal year for us. But some of the highlights of the budget, the schools and the general fund both received four percent increases, correct Dr. Barrett? The general fund budget deficit is one million four hundred and forty-two thousand four fifteen, we did add EMS is moving to the general fund budget. And do remember too, once they, at the end of the year when they transfer to the general fund budget, we will gain their fund balance whatever is left of it this year which should be four hundred to five hundred thousand. The budget committee made a recommendation to use rollover funds to balance the budget which typically each year we do have rollover funds as you all are aware of because we always take twenty percent I believe in moving to that assigned fund balance. C T A S raises for elected officials, five percent, a four point one percent cost of living for the judges, all employees again receive a four percent raise. The health insurance budget did increase three hundred and seventy-five thousand approximately two percent to help cover the fourteen percent healthcare cost increase projected by our actuarial team. We were looking at one point three million when we began that process, we did, we're able to cut it very low, but I do have some facts about our health insurance that I'd like to just share really quick if that's okay. The largest increase was eighty-eight dollars on the gold family plan and if you do the HRA you get a thirty dollar discount, that's eighty, so that's fifty-eight dollars a month for the best insurance we offer and the most expensive for family plan. There has been no increases to the health insurance since two thousand nineteen. For this year's budget, the county's average increase was a hundred dollars per employee and the employees was fifty-three, so we took on half of the, more than half of the cost. And the county pays approximately eighty-one percent of the employees premium and the employee pays nineteen percent average for it. Also we do offer three plans, a gold, a silver and a bronze, we have done that for years, the bronze being the last two years. But the gold did raise the most, if it's not affordable, we do, the silver plan is still a very rich plan and it is cheaper than your gold family insurance that you paid last year if you wanted to change to silver. So I think it was a fair process and I do want to add too that our employees raises have been four percent, five percent, seven percent and four percent recommendation this year. So I feel pretty good about what we've paid our employees the last four years, the best raises since I've been here like thirty-five years.
All right. Okay, uh, we do have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Foster, uh, is this, can you state your motion?
This is the part of the budget as presented and the tax levy resolutions, both of them together.
Okay, is that your second sir? All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the separate resolutions.
Eleven seventy and eleven, eleven seventy-one and eleven seventy-two, and I will like to add too, I should, this is a very key thing, there was a no tax increase for the, since, the last one we had was, well we had a reappraisal in twenty-twenty, so we haven't had a tax increase. Since two thousand nineteen. Yes.
Seventy-one and seventy-two. So we have the motion, just to, for Annette and the audience, the resolution twenty-four dash zero six dash eleven seventy-one fixing the tax levy beginning July one twenty-two-four. Resolution twenty-four dash zero six dash eleven seventy-two appropriating for the various funds, departments, institutions, offices and agencies for beginning fiscal year July twenty, July one twenty-two-four and ending June thirty twenty-two-five. All right, Commissioner Anderson, you have the floor sir.
Thank you Mr. Chairman, Robbie answered part of it already with describing the, the insurance plans and the, and the cost of that. But on the, on the pay raise, what, what we were shown in the appearance of citizens, kind of the math on that, um, do you want to?
For a four percent raise?
Yeah, I mean, can you just clarify, we, that, that was the, what budget approved was what the sheriff submitted, right? That was, I mean they.
You mean last year?
Or for this proposed budget, the, the.
The sheriff didn't submit an increase, we, the budget committee approved a four percent.
We, okay, so we.
For all employees for the, in the general fund, yes.
But the sheriff, I mean they didn't ask for like.
No, they didn't have any ask this year.
Okay.
No, they, now if you recall last year, their raises have a built-in, I mean it's a step raise each year.
A step, okay. So this, so what we were looking at, that didn't show a step increase at all, so.
No.
So that would be factored into, okay, that, that's what I wanted to clarify, thank you.
All right, thank you sir. Uh, Commissioner Beauchamp, you have the floor.
Thank you Mr. Chairman, um, I would just like to say those of us that sit on budget committee, we worked really hard on this budget to have a no tax increase budget, that's wonderful news for the county. We're also giving our employees a four percent raise, I'm in this courthouse probably three to four days a week and not one person, department head, elected official has said anything negative about the increase. Um, I wish Mr. Jennings had stayed, I know he came last year at the budget and he stood at the podium and when the sheriff proposed the budget for the sheriff's department, he said that was good. Now here we are giving four percent, math is a wonderful thing if you know how to use it and that's my thing on that. So I'm just saying that four percent is, is a good increase for the sheriff's department along with what they got. I've, I've not seen one county employee that's disputing that. I'm very proud of us as a whole of sixteen that we're coming to this and I would not recommend that we prolong this budget tonight, I would recommend that we move forward with this budget tonight despite what Mr. Jennings said. And let's get this budget passed so we can move on into the next fiscal year.
Very well said Commissioner. Okey-dokey, um, I did see Commissioner McCamey, you're good? All right, there we go. All right. So the motion on the floor, is everybody good with that, everybody in? Any others, okay Commissioner.
Thank you Mr. Chairman. Now just going through the spell that I have to go through, I went through it with the budget committee and just to make sure it's official on the record for those of us who may not already know, I'm a county employee, I work for the sheriff's office, I will be voting on this budget. Is there anything else I need to say? That's good, thank you.
Thank you Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome sir. All right, is there any other comments, discussion on the current motion? All right, seeing none, we will go to the board and vote. Motion passes sixteen yes, zero no.
Thank you.
Good job.
Good work everyone.
Thank you. Section D code two oh seven, we, we haven't done this in quite a while because we've had a very healthy self-insurance fund. Obviously if we're raising insurance, there's a reason for that because it's not so healthy this, coming into the new year. We expected a really good year but we, I mean insurance is a gamble and we haven't had a great year, so. In the past what we've done, each department and fund has a two oh seven code for their employees' benefits. If there's any money left in there, we, I sweep that code into our two sixty-three fund. This year if the budget committee passes, if the commission passes, it would put an additional two hundred and, around two hundred and eighteen thousand dollars in that fund which is on the fund balance report if I can find it really quick. If you look at it, we're at five hundred and three thousand dollars cash, total fund balance seven hundred and fifty, but I can promise you that number's going to go down because of our expenditures are more than our revenues this year. So we, could you use the money, it's also a way to help keep the cost, that was an option to help keep the cost down with the employees as well as with the county. So if anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
All right, Commissioner McCamey, you have the floor.
Robbie, does the rollover, the health, the health insurance fund, does it stay in that fund?
It does.
It does not go back into county's general?
No, it's not.
Any other questions for Mr. Holbrook? Commissioner Wondell.
Thank you Mr. Chairman, Robbie, how hard would it be to pull the last twelve years budgets and just give us the round numbers for all the departments like, kind of like what you do here on this resolution?
I can do that.
You could do that?
And could we get a, also an estimate on percentages returned back into the fund each of those years?
No hurry, I know you got. No hurry, I know you got other-
I was gonna say, I won't have that for you tomorrow.
No, no, no. But I, I, I think it would be helpful for all of us-
Yeah.
-to kind of review those things and look at each department, see, see how things are moving and in which direction they're moving and maybe give us an idea of what to keep our eyes on. So, thank you.
Definitely.
All right. Anybody else? All right, Robbie?
I need a vote on that.
Huh?
I mean, I need a motion and if anybody wants to make one.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Foster, seconded by Commissioner Wondell. Any discussion? Seeing none, go to the board and vote. Sixteen yes, zero no, motion passes.
Okay, and one last item on the budget agenda. It's under page forty-one, it's the drug court grant BA. The drug court was given after Budget Committee meeting this month, an additional nine thousand nine hundred and twenty dollars that they have to spend before June thirty if, but Commission would need to approve this budget amendment for that to happen. They are, they do hire, hire a contracted services employee that they pay out of their restricted funds and they can use this, this funding for that position, so it would really save the county money and we could use that grant money instead, so it's a good thing, I think.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Smallridge and seconded by Commissioner Beauchamp. Any discussion? Seeing none, please go to the board and vote. Sixteen yes, zero no, motion passes. All right, fine, then, yo, Commissioner McCamey, sorry, sir.
Commissioner Val, was in appropriation that you were looking at for the item you put under new business? Possibly, yes, sir, but with a couple of different alternatives of how to fund it. That's why I asked it be put under new business. I mean, I, of course, we can move it up.
I have no opposition to-
I was gonna suggest it come under budget.
Okay, is there any objection to addressing that? Seeing that's-
So, Mr. Lynch is concerned, we do have a huge court trial coming up in August. A lot of times, we don't have a July budget meeting, but he wanted to set aside funds in this year's budget. The problem with that is that when you do that, you have to still get in a, a motion to move them out of, like, a restricted fund into next year's budget. I would just like to bring something back to the July County Commission meeting with, if we don't have a Budget Committee meeting with a totals and it can be improved, approved in commission that night, I think that would be a solution, to get it in next year's budget. Because the, the trials are not till August.
Okay.
And I think it's, I mean, probably looking at fifty or sixty thousand from an assigned fund balance.
So, I guess the question would be, is hotel stay?
It's a sequestered jury, so it's going to be hotel, food.
With it being a block of rooms and, you know, I'm sure that he would, they would probably like to have that secured sooner than later.
Well, and Commission can make, I mean, I don't have my auditor here to ask that question if we make a motion. I mean, we could add it to the budget for, as a, but it can be, they are, the, the trial doesn't start till August, so we have time to do it in July, in my opinion.
Stop getting budget, yeah?
No.
I'll take that.
Commissioner Val?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Rex is still out in the hallway. Okay, if you could go ahead and address this, your, your plan that you had.
Right, so, don't want to talk a whole lot about the trial, but it is a question trial, for the amount of overtime for the sheriff's department, for about the food, for all the jurors, hotel, we're, we're looking at approximately, should be sixty to seventy thousand dollars. The, the suggestion I had, I was looking at our revenues this year and the, the budget this year, we had eight hundred and eighty thousand dollars in lieu, what's it called? Pay, salaries in lieu or?
Sorry, you turn over.
So, we turn over that to the county. We're already at eight hundred and ninety-seven thousand. I think we'll have at least sixty to seventy thousand, we'll have at least seventy thousand dollars that money, extra money that'll go into fund balance. Suggestion I had was go ahead and put up to seventy thousand dollars in a reserve fund. That way, we'll, it's the same difference either way, the only difference is next year, you'd have to take out of fund balance, where now, you're actually taking reserves, we have, money we have now, and putting it into a reserve account. So, then, we have money technically in the bank, I think, I think it'd be, we could spend money as long as we know the money's there. If not, we have to wait to July, the July meeting or the August meeting, and I just, I feel a little uncomfortable going out and making these commitments with the hotels and restaurants when I don't have an approved expenditure in hand. So, if I thought if we had the eighty, up to eighty thousand dollars in a reserve, at least I could give a, a good commitment that we have money in, in the bank to pay the vendors. So, either way, y'all want to do it, but I just, we need to be thinking about that because it's going to be here just a little, in a couple of months.
Commissioner Anderson, you have a motion?
I'll make the motion to do what Mr. Lynch said and put up to eighty thousand dollars in the reserve code for this trial.
Just so we're clear, if the money's in a reserve, it's not spendable.
We have to vote again in July to get it out?
That's what I'm saying.
The only difference, I'll give you this, the only difference is when you make a motion, instead of taking it out of your undesignated fund balance, which sometimes raises a lot of flags, you're taking it out of a reserve code. That's the only difference. So, it's, it's, it's the same amount of money either way.
Budget Committee can do that at the end of July.
If they may, we are, have July fourth and fifth, the budget meeting is on that, I think we moved it to the Monday, possibly July eighth, but the fourth and fifth are holidays, which is the Thursday and Friday, the first week. And last year, we didn't have a budget meeting in July. Not many people are amending their budget the first month, you know, they shouldn't be. I know, right? This is different, that's why I said I could bring it to Commission, but we can do it this, this way too. I can bring the reserve, restricted code if we restrict the money at the end of the year to-
Stranger things have happened, though. I notice we had a six dollar appropriation in the Budget Committee.
Oh, we have.
I've never seen that before in my life.
If it's a payroll code, we have to get it in balance.
So, what, whatever way the Budget Office feels y'all want to do, we just, I just want to make y'all aware of it and not shock you in August when we bring this bill to you.
Are you telling us, so that you don't, that you want to do it tonight?
I, I don't have a preference, I just want to make y'all aware of it, that we've got a couple of options. Budget Directors told y'all, y'all, different ways to do it, I'm, I'm fine with either way, I just didn't want-
You said you didn't want to, you wanted to make sure you-
Your motion.
We'll be able to, I mean, I don't have a problem with that. I just didn't want to shock, I've sat there before, I know it's like to make an undesignated fund appropriation as soon as the budget's passed, and it, it just looks strange, sometimes it's difficult to vote for that. We've got, we have to pay these bills, so I just, I was just trying to get it done now, so I don't have to worry about it, so.
If I misspoke, is, reserve is the, is what it needs to be, not restricted.
Yeah, and the reserve still has to be moved from a reserve to a budget code, so it would still require an appropriation in July.
In lieu of salary, that's what, in lieu of salary.
He's, want to increase revenue and basically is, anybody that's revenue's more than, than what we budgeted for is going to roll in fund balance anyway, but I understand what Rex is saying too.
Okay, Commissioner Foster?
So, if we pass this tonight, you've got to come back in the July meeting, it doesn't sound like we're going to have a budget meeting at the Commission meeting.
I can do it at the Commission level then.
Would bring it out of, out of the reserves, is that what you prefer?
That's fine. Do it, let's do it. We don't need to, it doesn't have to be difficult, I mean, I think I'm complicating it, so.
We don't have to take any action at all if you don't want to.
Mr. Smallridge?
Yeah, Rex, tell me what, is this for again?
This is for a capital case in Circuit Court.
Okay, just-
In criminal court, I'm sorry.
I know you understand what he's saying, but I, I at least think it needs to be, I'm not sure if everybody's clear, exactly the motion. You're increasing, are you, is this motion to increase a revenue code or is it just to put rollover money?
No, we're, I mean, we're are, we are moving money into a restricted code for the purpose of spending for the jury trial, from the general fund. I mean, it's-
Well, I don't want there to be any uncertainty.
I would say for, to be, to be an assigned fund balance, that's where it's, I mean, basically, it's where it's-
I mean, because I think that needs to be clear in the motion, is where, where's this coming from?
One motion I can make or remedy, is you could say, any money in the, that's over the, the budgeted amount in the lieu of salary, Circuit Court, up to seventy thousand dollars, be put in a reserve fund for a future court case.
I'm, I'm good with it. That was his motive.
If you don't want to do that, like Rex said, we can do it in July, I'm just trying to keep it from going to fund-
Commissioner Anderson, is that your motion?
Yes.
Commissioner Varen, is that your second?
I can make it work.
I, I love this, I can make it work stuff makes me worry about an audit.
No, I mean, I know what it is, I, I get the motion.
Just to be clear.
I'm the one, I mean, it's going to be the Finance Department doing this, so, yes.
I agree with that, but we have to have-
Right, I agree.
An approved motion for you to make action.
Yes.
And the approved motion needs to be clear of what the action is. So, I just wanted it to be clear because I, I want to make, we're good, is everybody good? Any discussion on the motion? Commissioner Palmer?
I have a question about the dollar amount, seventy thousand is the dollar amount?
Up to?
Up to seventy?
And that, that's very conservative.
Okay.
And I think you'd probably come back in September and then we'll take that money and we'll divvy it up in the codes where it needs to go, Sheriff Department, we got jurors, food, we got housing, so when you thin September, we'll basically divvy that money up, and then we'll know the exact amounts.
All right. Any other discussion? And the mo, Annette, you know what the motion is?
I'll have to get it off the recording.
And just for, just to make sure, this, this, last time we had this, I think it was two thousand sixteen, so this is not something that happens very often.
And the motion is to set aside, up to sec-
Yeah.
All right.
Up to seventy thousand.
Up to seventy thousand dollars. All right, go to the board and vote. Fifteen yes, one no. Motion passes.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee.
Before budget ends, do we need to cancel the budget, the-
Yes, we can cancel the special call meeting.
I just didn't know we knew that before you got done with the budget part.
Monday.
It is hereby canceled, Annette. All right, Finance Committee report, Robbie Holbrook.
Yes, sir. Usually, finance is on the consent agenda, there is one resolution on this agenda that we need to take action on. It is Resolution twenty-four oh six, eleven seventy-two, it's the issuance of a general obligation bond by Anderson County, Tennessee, in Paramount, not to exceed five point nine million to finance the acquisition of land for, and construction, improvement, repair, renovation, and equipping a county animal shelter and related costs, and to pay the cost incident to the sale and issuance of the bonds. This is not approving the, the bond at all. There is a twenty day, well, the foregoing resolution, there's a notice that after, if you all approve this, that we put in the paper, the foregoing resolution has been adopted unless within twenty days from the date of publication. Hereof, a petition signed, at least ten percent of the registered voters of the county shall, have been filed with the county clerk protesting the issuance of bonds, such bonds may be issued as a proposed, as proposed. So, basically, it requires a petition to, it's putting the county on, in citizens on notice that the county is possibly going out to get bonds for five point nine million.
But this vote is not-
It is not approving any of that, right? Mayor, do you care, want to add anything?
Correct, this is just to run an ad and checks the box for USDA, so at a future point in time, after, there's still several more steps to go. I know Jay's got one he has to sign off as well, several more steps before the actual bond resolutions that would have to come and be voted on by full commission. This checks the box that we have advertised that that is our intent to do that, and it gives the citizens a chance to file a protest.
Thank you, Mayor. We have a motion by Commissioner McCamey for approval, is that correct, sir?
Yes.
Commissioner Varen with the second, Commissioner Yeager, you're recognized.
The resolution has the phrase finance the acquisition of land, don't we already own the piece of land?
We do, that's just in the resolution. We could, if we wanted, pay ourselves back for that purchase. I mean, I, I don't intend to recommend that, we've already paid for it, why would we roll that up into the financing package? But that's just standard for, for that, yeah.
Thanks.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Yeager. Any other discussion? This can be a, Jay, well, this can be a voiceover, not making any kind of appropriation or anything like that, right?
Correct.
All right, thank you. All right, seeing no discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Purchasing Committee report?
Yes, sir. So, on the purchasing order report, there are thirteen contracts now approved by the Law Director in Sections Four and Five. We are taking out A, five A, the State of Tennessee Office of Criminal Justice Programs, with the mayor's contract, just been deferred thirty more days for some amendment changes in the, if you all like to take those at a group.
We have a motion by Commissioner Foster, seconded by Commissioner Yeager to approve as a group. Any discussion? Seeing none, go to the board and vote. Motion passes.
Okay, under six unfinished business, there's a resolution to sell a twenty thousand fifteen F-250 to Hardman County for fifteen thousand dollars, it's Resolution twenty-four oh six, eleven sixty-nine.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Yeager, seconded by Commissioner Foster. Commissioner Wondell, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Jay, or Robbie, was this item on US Gov. deals already and then taken down and then this new proposal, how did this work?
I think, yeah, Chief Galloway could probably answer that better than me, I think it was, and this company, this county wanted the vehicle, I think we could possibly get a little more money for it, maybe, I don't know, is that for a fact though?
Yeah, Commissioner Wondell, it, it, we did have it listed on Gov. deals, and then this county, one of their administrators reached out asking about it, and we just come up with this agreement. It's, it's one that we purchased out of the drug fund and it's got some pretty excessive wear on it. It's, it's a good truck, but it's, it's, it's hit a few things, so there is some damage, so.
I'm certainly not challenging the idea of helping out, you know, working to deal with Hart County, whatever, but I guess my question was, from a legal standpoint, did we check all the boxes?
Okay.
Okay, I'm good then, thank you. Thanks, Chief, appreciate it.
Typically, when we sell surplus, we don't do a resolution, but this is kind of an intergovernment, interlocal government agreement.
And just to be clear, Robbie, this will go back into that one twenty-two drug-
It will, if it was purchased with drug funds, in which we have that on the asset report, it will go back into that fund.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okey-doke.
Sir.
All right, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, and, and number six unfinished business, surplus capital asset sales, this is information only, we had a starting bid for a two thousand six Crown Victoria, two hundred dollars, and we sold it for twelve hundred and twenty-five dollars. And then, under new business, we pass that with all the other contracts, so.
Yeah. All right, thanks, Robbie.
That's all I have, thank you.
All right, I know that Dr. Parrot doesn't have a report, but it, he is a captive audience, if there's any questions for Dr. Parrot. All right, seeing that, you're free to go. All right, Law Director, Jay Yeager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have a few items. First of all, I want to appreciate all the outpouring of support from me and my family regarding mom, you guys have been incredible, the calls, the texts, the emails, the prayers, it's really touching, I really appreciate that, and I know my sister and my dad do too, but thank you again. Any questions on the contract approvals or anything on the report? I just have two action items tonight for you, and they're under item D and E on the amended report. Item D is the Kroger opioid settlement approval, you've got information on that attached, and You've got information on that attached, and I think Nicole sent out the master agreement, which is several hundred pages, but I need approval on that, and then we'll take up the E one.
All right.
Any questions on that? It's a pretty thick settlement agreement, but I put the basics here in the, the attachment to my report.
Okay. Do we have a motion for Resolution 24-06-1174?
Yes, Mr. President. Second.
Commissioner Isbell, you're recognized.
Okay. Well, this is just about a zoning thing. You want me to go ahead and take it up now or...
Well, let's go ahead and vote on this real quick, sir, then I'll, I'll come back to you. Can you hit your little, if you're able to?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, all right. So, we have a motion and a second for approval. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. Commissioner Isbell?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Jay, and this is for clarification to the constituents that we have in District 4.
Yes, sir.
They had one reach out about 244 Cumberland View Estates, and this house has been burnt and, and, you know, the county has done everything that they can do, and the bank has asked for 30 more days to try to get it cleaned up because there's a water runoff issue now. So, we're just letting our constituents know.
Yeah, I referred that to, the day after you contacted me. Or later that day, I referred it to the Building Commissioner.
Same day.
And they're taking a look at it, and if they can't get any satisfaction, they'll send it back to us and we'll take care of it.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right.
The next item I have is item E, and that's the settlement agreement with Methodist Medical. That was inmate medical charges. This is not an appropriation. We already have the money in the inmate medical code, and also, I'll take care of the court cost out of my legal services code, so it does not require any money. But this is a case that involved, where Methodist sued us for inmate medicals, and we negotiated a new rate with them, and this is the final settlement agreement. Also, as part of this, I need authority in the motion for the chairman to sign this. Sheriff Barker's already signed it.
All right. Do we have a motion? We have a motion by Commissioner Allen for approval? Do we have a second on the motion? Commissioner Bochamp with the second. And that is to approve the settlement and for the, you said for...
The chairman to sign the agreement.
To sign the agreement, okay. All right. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
That's all I have for you, unless anybody's got any questions.
All right. Commissioner Wondell?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Jay, I know we exchanged emails on that gate. For, out there at the Black Cemetery. I've had a couple of people, Leo York.
Sure.
Any more movement on that to get the gate installed?
The question there is, our original agreement that we passed here had us picking up the liability on the right of way, and that's natural through state law. It looks like, until I spoke with you, they were trying to get us to pick up liability to where the gate started down there. And to me, looking at that situation, the most likely place where an accident's going to occur is when that gate road intersects with Old Blacks Ferry Road. So, that, that's an issue, but you're telling me now that you believe we own that property up into the gate?
The, the map I saw shows that the, the old roadway going to the old bridge, we own it all the way down to where TVA accepts it.
Well, that helps me a lot.
So, we come off Blacks Ferry, and then you go down where the gate would be, and you'll probably go another, I don't know, 200 or 300 yards, and then that's TVA's property. Right before we get to the TVA property, you cut up to Black Cemetery, so it's on us, I think.
That sounds good. We'll take care of it from there.
Okay.
It's very reasonable. I didn't realize we went that far back.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Okie doke. All right. Thank you, Jay.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Isbell, I know you had already kind of mentioned, but if you, you had a question you wanted to ask about the...
I didn't even pick them up, actually, no.
Oh, the property, the forest that, well, I actually had some constituents ask me to, the chambers breaking ground there and do the clearing, but I understand that the chamber sold that to the city.
Okay.
And that's what I, I got the information today.
The one that, the property here in Clinton?
Yeah.
Yeah, they sold it to the city of Clinton, bought the lot on Main and wherever that road is, Hicks.
Trent Hicks, right.
Hicks, yeah. They've sold it to the city.
Do you know how much they sold to the city for, and what's the city gonna do with it?
The city is, from what I was told, they are doing a parking lot right now, extra parking for downtown, and a staging area for, if you've ever been come through there during car pickup, it's lined out into Main Street, so they're gonna route traffic up